Call the City of Milton Common Council Meeting to order Tuesday, December 5th, 2017 at 7:07. We're using our amended agenda and can I get confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
The agenda was posted at Dave's Hardware, Piggly Wiggly, and Milton City Hall.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, we have an agenda. Pledge of Allegiance.
All right.
We trust this to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four, public comments regarding items which can be affected by council action. We're not aware of any public comments. Did anybody sign in? Item number five, approval of minutes from November 28th, 2017.
So moved.
Oh, go ahead. Second. Paper, rock, scissors. All those in favor? All those opposed, the motion carries. Item number six, discussion and possible action on Resolution 2017-23 approving agreement and authorizing acceptance of assignment of offer to purchase from Backyard Properties of Rock County LLC.
So this item was also on the Plan Commission Agenda today in which they unanimously approved and recommended to the council for approval. What this item is, is a, there's a long memo that goes along with this that kind of explains how we got here, but in short, we are looking to purchase 7.01 acres of land in our industrial park from Bellardi Family Investments LLC. The purchase agreement to acquire that land was actually struck by Backyard Properties of Rock County and we would be the assignee of that offer to purchase. How we got to this process is as the land was being developed out in our east side industrial park, Kevin Hendricks, owner of Backyard Properties LLC approached the city about their willingness to construct a large stormwater facility that would serve a greater part of that region. At the time that he approached the city, we were not necessarily in a position to make that acquisition, so he offered to make that acquisition for the city or on behalf of the city with the understanding that we would purchase that back from Backyard Properties LLC over a course of time. Well, that conversation started in the spring of 2017 and as the year went on and negotiations kind of commenced, it became probably more, it became more and more apparent that it would actually be more advantageous for the city to purchase that property outright. Plans for that area have called for a large stormwater facility, plans that date back to 2013 if not before. Because of the natural contours of the land, this is the proper location for that stormwater facility. Our engineering staff, Mark Langer, and his team have reviewed that area and have designed a pond that would fit in this area. So ultimately what this comes down to is we would be asking the council for approval to become the assignee of the purchase agreement that was struck between Backyard Properties and Bellardi Family Trust in which the city would ultimately purchase that property. And the property in question is actually the next item on the agenda, the CSM, the seven-acre CSM, but we wanted to have this conversation first because without this conversation, the next topic would be moot. The acquisition would take, would be, would be a one-time dispersment of funds as opposed to a five-year plan like we originally talked about with, with Backyard Properties. Funding would come from TIF and it fits well within our, the cash flow for TIF 6 in its current arrangement. It's, like I said, it's, it makes sense for the city to own and control that stormwater facility. It makes sense for the development and the best use of that land. Right now, it would be very difficult to even develop that parcel for anything other than stormwater because of the pipeline and because of the contours, so the stormwater facility is a natural fit in that location. Had Backyard Properties not kind of brought this topic up, the city would have eventually purchased that land anyways, but because they're looking to kind of speed up development in that location, they wanted to kind of ensure that it was done sooner rather than later. But as, as it works out, it makes sense for us to just simply purchase the property outright as opposed to entering into a subsequent agreement with Backyard Properties in which we would pay interest and lose some of control over the land over the next five years. So that is the, the item for discussion. We would, if approved, we would be closing on that property sometime before the end of the year in conversations with both Bellardi and Backyard Properties today. They indicated that they'd like to have that done probably sometime next week and, but we wouldn't construct the stormwater facility until the time that it's actually needed, which would be sometime in the future, hopefully sooner rather than later, but we wouldn't begin construction on it until the, until the development required it. So I hope that makes sense. My memo makes a lot more sense than what I just said.
Is there any comments or questions?
I did have one, Madam Mayor. The acquisition occurs then, like shortly, basically, right? Upon approval of the assignment, basically?
Yep, yep. So, so how this would play out in the event that, that this, this resolution was approved tonight, the mayor would sign that agreement, we would present that agreement then to, to Backyard Properties, they would schedule a closing with Bellardi Family Trust and basically instead of Backyard Properties showing up with the check, we would show up with the check. And, and as I said, I talked to the legal representation from Backyard Properties today and I talked to the legal representation from Bellardi Family Trust and they would like to do that sometime probably next week. So then at that point, we would be the owner of that, of that land.
Is there any other questions or comments?
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 2017-23 approving agreement and authorizing acceptance of assignment to offer, assignment of offer to purchase.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion carries. Item number seven, discussion and possible action on a one-lot certified survey map along Putnam, Putman Parkway.
So this is the land that, the subject land that we just discussed. It's a seven-acre parcel that would be solely constructed, solely purchased and used for stormwater facility, a regional stormwater facility. The survey also dedicates right-of-way for your future north-south street in that area, so we would have that dedicated to the CSM. This is the legal description that would be used in the, that is used in the offer to purchase is the CSM.
Question again?
I think I know the answer, but I'd like to verify it. That a future street was responsible for that? Whoever developed, held there covers some of the costs of that.
It's dedicated to the public, so it would be a public street, yeah.
Anything else?
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we approve the subject one-lot CSM along Putnam Parkway and the dedication of the future north-south right-of-way.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding a developer's agreement with Forster Construction LLC for the development of the Red Hawk Farms subdivision.
Item number eight and nine on the agenda are inherently tied together. Item number eight is the developer's agreement that is, is an agreement between the City of Milton and the developers. Tom and Cindy Forster who are out in the audience, we have questions for them. The developer's agreement basically outlines all the roles, responsibilities, timing, and financial ramifications or responsibilities of the development that will occur out, out in this subdivision. It's important to note that this developer's agreement only covers the first phase of the development, which is, which is what will be discussed next on the agenda, the 33-lot Phase 1 of the, of the development. Subsequent phases of development will have a developer's agreement as well that will probably look similar to this, but hopefully be shorter because they won't need to address some of those upfront things that go along with starting a, a development. In the past, the City of Milton has had developer's agreements with residential developers. This one is a little bit more substantive, kind of updated the language to kind of match practices of the time. This has gone before Tom and Cindy Forster and their legal representation and they are in agreement with it. It's certainly gone through our legal representation and again, just really outlines the roles and responsibilities of the development as it occurs out in Red Hawk Farms subdivision.
Is there any questions or comments?
Is there anything in this agreement that's different from recent agreements that we've had with other, I realize that we have?
It's, so it's substantially different than, than, well, I guess, let me back up. As far as recent agreements on residential development, there hasn't been one for probably close to a decade.
That's right.
So when we started this process, we looked at, we looked back at that and, as I looked at it, from, from my background, I thought it was insufficient, to be frank. So working with Mark, Attorney Schrader, we put something together that was more commensurate with what we were used to seeing. So, so in that regard, it's substantially different than what has been in the past for residential development.
I appreciate that. That's why I asked the question because in my former experience in the town of Greenville, we had a lot of problems with this area, so with development agreements.
And we certainly, I, in my previous job, I hadn't worked with Tom and Cindy, but you know, they have proven themselves to be very reputable developers in the Janesville area and I think there was, there wasn't really anything that caught them by surprise in the developer's agreement. There were some tweaks that we made along the way, language, timing changes, but certainly they, they have established themselves a very quality rep, reputation in Janesville and I certainly reached out to my contacts in Janesville to verify that.
Glowing toward glowing.
Oh, no, no, no.
Because this will set the precedent for the future to go forward.
Any other questions?
I move that we approve the...
I just asked if there are any other questions, but there's not.
I move that we approve the developer agreement between the City of Milton, Foster, Forster Construction for the development of the Red Hawk Farms subdivision.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Any questions or concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion carries. Item number nine, discussion and possible action on a final plat for Red Hawk Farms subdivision.
So this is the, the final step of this process, is the final plat. The final plat is very similar to the preliminary plat that was reviewed back in September, I believe. Thirty-three newly-platted lots in an R2 residential subdivision. R2 residential, as a reminder, permits single-family use. Single-family construction with duplexes is a conditional use. This plat does not, doesn't have any duplexes planned for at this time. It calls for an extension of Red Hawk, Hilltop, and Rogers Street with the construction of a new street, Galen, Galen Lane. There's an east-west connection between those three streets. It also dedicates an outlot for stormwater management and several other stormwater easements that are, that are dealt through, through the stormwater facilities easement agreement as part of the plat. Again, this is the first phase of this development. I passed out what is a concept for the future build-out. They are not by any means locked into this future concept, but that's, you know, what they hope to achieve over time. Each phase will go through the same process of a preliminary plat and a final plat as we move forward. The first phase is just the first 33 lots that are bolded on that concept map. And they hope to begin construction early next year?
I'll make the motion to approve the site plan for Red Hawk Farms.
Final plat.
Final plat. For the first portion of the Red Hawk Farms development.
Second. Yeah, contingency would be upon recording the easements that they provided to Forster and are included in the packet.
You can add that to my motion.
I agree. And that's dealt with through the developer's agreement as well, so it's a little redundant with.
All right, any questions, any concerns? Everybody understand the motion? All those in favor? All those opposed, the motion carries and we will have a future development. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Dave?
Yeah.
Yes, he's here.
You're not breathing loud enough for Jeremy. Oh, for Linda. She doesn't have her hearing aids turned on yet. All right, item number 10, discussion and possible action on ordinance 217-439 amending Section 70-153 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Milton regulating parking along West High Street and Hilltop Drive. I just have a question because I'm trying to visualize the Hilltop Drive portion of it. It starts where and ends where?
If you, it's the, the driveway that is almost right across from Orchard Row.
Okay.
So it's that.
It's the school's driveway?
That's the school's driveway. It's across from Orchard Row. And so it goes from that driveway, I guess, towards the football field on that side of the street. That's the Hilltop part.
What do you mean, like?
It's that side of the road where the football field is. From there.
The entire side of the road?
No, just 150 feet from that driveway.
Oh, okay.
Towards the football field and there's, there's probably only about three spots you can park there now. Because the hydrant already has like a 25-foot where you can't park and you can't park 10 feet from the driveway. So that's already 35 feet of it you couldn't park anyways. So there's probably enough for three or four cars. That's the only difference. But it's from that, the driveway on Hilltop that goes up towards the main entrance of the high school and that's on the football field side, towards the football field.
And the concern is cars exiting the high school using that driveway, looking to the left to see if the roadway is clear and their vision being obstructed.
After football games, no.
Or a show choir.
Because it's, yeah, I can see what you're talking about. I was over there looking.
So, and I-
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't all of Hilltop, like to John Paul.
And I don't know how we mentioned this, iPod, is it?
Talking about High Street.
Yeah. This, this came to light as part of the traffic impact analysis. So this came to light as part of the traffic impact analysis in which they saw that that, that intersection or that exit or entrance, whatever you want to call it, was operating inefficiently because cars that were exiting the parking lot, heading in an easterly direction, looking to their left or a northerly direction as cars were traveling south, they couldn't see those cars. So it's causing a long, longer queuing lane than what should have been caused. So now with the removal of parking, as cars are exiting the parking lot and looking to their left, they'll have a wider range of, of vision to see if cars are coming up that hill on Hilltop. So it should hopefully diminish the queue time as cars are exiting and cause, create a more efficient traffic pattern in that area.
Did Public Safety recommend it?
Yeah, unanimously was recommended by Public Safety.
And that will serve as your, as your public safety report.
So moved for approval.
Second. Is there any further questions or concerns? Anybody? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion carries.
And that's to approve the first reading, waive the second, third, and adopt.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Could you eliminate that, please?
Linda, will you read the second? Yes, okay.
Discussion and possible action on Resolution 2017-22 adopting the public participation procedures for amending the comprehensive plan for the City of Milton.
So TLC Restorations, and their ownership is out in the audience this evening for questions if you have any, approached the city, phew, almost a year ago probably, if not longer, with the idea of potentially expanding their, their business, which is currently located at 635 Greenman Street and then they also have the building on Parkview Drive, expanding their business to the west, further up Greenman Street. Since that time, or since we started these conversations, TLC Restorations has acquired the home at 627 Greenman Street and already owns the vacant lot at 621 Greenman Street. And in order to execute their plans and build a approximately 7,000 square foot facility that they would use as part of their business operations for, for storage, they would need to rezone that property. It's currently zoned, I think, R3. But in order to rezone the property, we would also need to amend the comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan calls for that, that, those two parcels to be residential development or residential neighborhood development. So the comprehensive plan in this case does trump the zoning ordinances. They, they don't have to always be exact. They don't match up. The vernacular isn't the same, but the concepts have to match. So with it being in the comprehensive land use plan as residential use, we wouldn't be able to rezone the property to B2, which would be the, the preferred zoning for their type of development. We would need to first amend the comprehensive plan. So that is a bit more of a process. It's, it's a little bit laborious and a little bit redundant, a little bit drawn out, and that's all kind of articulated in state statutes. And the reason being, and we talked about this a little bit at Plan Commission, you know, the, the state purposefully makes it difficult for communities to amend their comprehensive plan and they, they do that for good reason. You know, your comprehensive plan is your future land use map for the next 25 to 50 years and probably shouldn't be tinkering with it, you know, from, from time to time. But this is a, this is a unique opportunity with an established business that has made a tremendous investment in this community and, and they want to continue to be in that area and expand their operations. They've acquired the land necessary to do so, but in order to effectuate their development plans, we would need to go through this process. So the first step in that process is what's on the agenda for this evening. It's for the council to adopt a public participation procedure for amending the comprehensive plan. Again, there's, it's quite a process. It's, it's more than just rezoning. So we'd have to amend the comprehensive plan and then rezone. So the process would feel like it's happening twice, but there, but there are two different steps to it. So the council's question tonight is, is do we want to proceed with the amending of the comprehensive plan? And if so, we need to adopt the public participation procedures, which then start, start the process rolling, which requires a public hearing at the Plan Commission level and, and additional step of action by the council before we can start to talk about rezoning. We can do those, we can do the rezoning and amending of the comprehensive plan concurrently, but we need to do this first. So that is ultimately the question at hand, is, is does the council have an appetite to entertain this type of development in this location and a potential rezoning? And if so, we would need to start this process and if, and if not, the council can stop the process right now, but the public part, but, but it doesn't necessarily mean that if we entered the public participation process that it's a done deal. It can be stopped along the way too. So I just want to make sure that everybody's aware of all their options that are available to them. And simply voting yes on this tonight doesn't mean that you're voting yes on the project, voting yes on the rezoning, voting yes on the amending of the comprehensive plan. But in order to start the process, we have to start somewhere and this is, this allows for the public to, to begin to participate in this process. So that's really what's at question tonight. I've included a lot of additional information from TLC Restorations as to their plans, what they want to do, what their building would look like, the location of the building, and that's just to give you kind of a better understanding of ultimately what, what, what they're working towards and, and what, what would be the end game of this process if we were to move through the process. Mark, did I miss anything? That's why I like to hear.
In order, in order to move forward, we, we certainly need public input, you know? I mean, I'm not too concerned about giving permission for that to happen. That's kind of the feel I get for this step. This step sets the process in place.
Right. It is definitely a policy decision by the council. You know, I mean, my recommendation would be to approve this to begin the process because again, even if, even if you are vehemently opposed to it, even at this time, there's nothing that says that, that the process has to, has to be seen to conclusion. This merely starts the process. But if there is, if there's a general consensus on the council that they just, that you just don't want to see this happen, you could put a stop to it right now.
I, you know, I think I'm very supportive to look into it. We've been supportive all along to, as the bill, or the, the business has grown and to, to just stop in the middle of the growth would be very inappropriate on our behalf. I, I agree with, with that, Teresa, and also TLC has been a very good business in the City of Milton and, and I think that we should start the process.
Is there any further questions or comments? Dave, do you have anything? Jeremy, Ryan, anybody? So there's an optional public information meeting and we can do that and then do a public hearing. The, obviously, public information meeting is optional. So what is the next step? What motion would the city make?
Well, it would be adopting the procedures and then I think at that time, and please, Attorney Schrader, jump in. At that point, we can, at some future date, we could choose to have that optional public meeting, but the public hearing must occur.
Correct. That's correct. Yeah, the, what we've laid out for in the public participation procedures plan is consistent with what's in your current plan. So we're really not doing anything different than what you currently have. We're just reiterating it for this particular proposed amendment. So you're correct. After this begins, then you can, if you wish, the council can schedule a public informational hearing. There's going to be a, in any event, a, a meeting before the Plan Commission where it considers it and makes its recommendation to the common council. And so they can also, of course, have public input at that should they choose to do so before they make their recommendation to the council and the council will hold a public hearing and then following public hearing determine whether or not to approve an ordinance to amend it, to amend the-
The city council is the only body that has a public hearing though, not the Plan Commission, correct?
That's correct. That's per your existing comprehensive plan. Per statute, it can be either the council or it can be the Plan Commission. Your current plan has chosen to have that occur before the common council.
But the public can attend the Plan Commission meeting as well?
Yes, certainly. It will be noticed like any other Plan Commission meeting and it'll be on the agenda and it'll be up to the Plan Commission whether they'll have a period of public information or comment, but it won't be a statutory public hearing. So that will occur before you.
And what I, I, I guess I'll say what I said in, in, in the Plan Commission as well. This, this is a process that, that doesn't come up very often. I don't know. Mark, have you ever even done this before?
Yes, I've done this. It's, it's because it's not uncommon that in a broad comprehensive plan, that a municipality doesn't anticipate a development opportunity that has evolved.
Yeah.
And so, yes, I've, I've been involved with, with it where municipalities have amended it for similar reasons where they thought at first that it was a good idea to have a certain type of development in, in a specific area. As it evolved over the years, reality was it was going in a different direction. And so they, they went in and determined that it would be appropriate to provide for it. It wasn't an inappropriate use. It's just that when they made their initial.
Right.
Determination, they had to choose between uses and they chose use A and then as time evolved, they found that use B was perhaps more appropriate. So it, it's not unusual, but as indicated that the statute does require you to go through some additional steps to, to determine that because it is a comprehensive future land use plan for the next at least 10 years. I think you're supposed to.
Right.
Review it every 10 years. And as, as these- And as, as these, uh, procedures indicate, you can also, if, if it requires a rezoning of property, you can run some of this concurrent, and you've got this in your plan, so you're not having to go all the way through and then start it all over again in terms of rezoning. So you're, again, this is following with what you've done in the past.
I had one more question. And again, it may be somewhat redundant, but I just want to assurance, I guess, uh, opening the door on this one situation, it's a particular situation, particular landowner and all that, um, does not necessarily set precedence to the community to say, "Well, golly, let's do this," or "Let's do this." So I've, I'm just, I know, I think I know the answer.
Yeah, I mean, it would, I, you know, I, I think this is a unique situation, and as, as Mark talked about, it, it generally comes up in, in these, in these kind of edge distinctions where, where two land uses kind of bump up to, against each other, and maybe, maybe it starts to grow a little bit more than it would. Um, so yeah, I think it's, it's, it's a unique situation, and what would be addressed in the amendment of the comprehensive plan is really just these two parcels. It wouldn't be kind of a, we wouldn't be re-reviewing the comprehensive plan and creating...
For, for that whole area, right?
No.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
I'll move that we adopt Resolution 2017-22 in order to begin the public participation portion of the comprehensive plan amendment process.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any further comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries.
Oh, I should add my...
The fun's just begun.
It might be warm when we get this finished. Okay, item number 12, discussion of possible action on Ice Age Trail Community Memorandum of Understanding.
Staff recently received confirmation that the Ice Age Trail Alliance's Outreach and Education Committee approved the Ice Age Trail Community Designation Application that was submitted a couple of months ago by the Parks and Recreation Commission. So the memorandum of understanding is in agreement with the Ice Age Trail Alliance to develop that relationship with them. Um, this is one of the last steps. The other piece to that is the $2,500, um, one-time application fee, and the council and Parks and Recreation Commission previously approved that coming from the park fund. So that's all taken care of, just need council action on the MOU tonight.
And if you've reviewed the MOU and the responsibilities of each party, it is really a great memorandum of understanding, and it's very beneficial. I mean, I actually think it's as beneficial, if not more beneficial, to the city. Um, so congratulations to Park and Rec for going through this whole application process, and I know it was detailed, and a lot of effort was put into it, and I'm really excited for Melt to become a trail community.
I'll make a mo... I'll make a motion to approve the memorandum of, of understanding between the Ice Age Trail Alliance and the city of Milton.
Second.
Now, is there any further discussion or questions or concerns? You're just pushing this through. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. All right, item number 13, discussion and possible action and Resolution 2017-24, supportive allocation of resources to address deferred maintenance needs in America's national park system, since we're now, um, formally a community, and we, um, are going to fulfill our commitment in the memorandum of understanding. Um, I think it's important for us to follow through with support for, um, funding to continue to be allocated for our national parks in the state of Wisconsin. Want to increase them, not decrease them. Any questions on the resolution?
Move for approval.
There's a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments or concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, discussion and possible action regarding the potential for a spring primary if necessary.
So the, the reason we had this on the agenda is, is that pretty much every year that, uh, that I've been here, we've, we've kind of had this discussion, but generally the discussion has happened much later in the process, and there's always been some concern about, well, it, it may be deemed to be unfair to people who have turned in nomination papers if they weren't aware that there may be a primary. So we wanted to address this right in the beginning of the process. So the question is if there are more than twice the number of candidates for available seats, so there's three available seats, if there was six or more candidates, would the council like to hold a primary for that spring election? Is it more than twice, Mark? So seven, so seven candidates, seven, seven or more candidates, I'm sorry. So this has come up pretty much every year that I've been here, like I said, and, and every time the, the conversation kind of happens, and then it says, "Well, we're too late in the process," so we wanted to do it right on the onset. Folks could start taking out papers on Friday of last week, as far as I know, no one has yet. Ryan? But, uh, but again, that's the other part of the process. Every year that I've been here, people always call me up and say, "Who's taking out papers?" We don't know. Unless they come into City Hall and request papers, we don't know. You can download them right off the webpage, and we would never know if you did that. So, so the idea that, um, we kind of just wait to see how many candidates there are, we, we, we don't, we won't really know. January 2nd, you have to turn the papers in, and at that day, there could conceivably be 15 people lined up at the door to hand in papers. Um, and then to make the decision to have a primary then may be considered to be unfair that people didn't know what they were getting into when they took out papers. So that's why we wanted to have the conversation right on the onset. And the primary, then, the purpose is to, to, would be to narrow the field of potential candidates for council.
And what's the date of the primary? February?
That feels right to me for some reason.
Yep.
I mean, the council does not have to go this direction. If there, if there's 12 candidates, you could have 12 people at the general election on, on April 7th or 9th or whatever it is, but...
If you want somebody to win by like three votes or something.
Just curious, when's the last time we actually had a primary?
This is going to be the first year we have 12 candidates.
There, there has not been a primary since I've been here, but, but I, I don't know if there was one in the past or not.
I don't remember a primary in the last nine years. We voted for one.
There was, six of us, well, right last night, right? Pretty close to the primary last night.
But you, it doesn't automate, it's not an automatic, the council would have had to have voted for a primary first.
Well, I was just looking at costs and all that.
Yes, there, there would be a cost, yes.
Sometimes there might be if one of the state, um...
If there's a state...
Statewide, yeah.
For, for superintendent or judge or...
Yeah, court, Supreme Court.
Yeah.
So we would have to have one anyway, but...
Yeah, so then there would be no additional cost.
But we, once again, we won't know that until January 2nd also.
I think that we should go with a primary.
I don't think you could have a valid vote, I don't think you'd have a valid vote really in the end if you have that many cal, candidates.
Is there a motion then?
I'll move that we have a primary if we have, uh, a sufficient number of candidates to determine that it's valid or appropriate.
Seven or more?
Seven or more candidates.
There's a motion and a second. Does everybody understand the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. And that should be the headline.
If only they were here.
What the heck? Someone issue a press release.
Mark Langer takes out papers.
Come on, let's go. Get your friends and neighbors on the mail.
You're still living in the city right now, right?
You have relatives, don't you? Sign up your wife. All right, general items, committee reports. We knocked off Jeremy's committee.
Could, could we get a report on the Public Safety meeting with regard to the speed limit on Parkview Drive?
Chair.
Hi, we're just going to take down the speed limit signs.
Yes! All right, welcome to North Dakota.
Nice, nice reaction.
We decided to pass it on to council and suggest a public hearing in regards to increasing the speed limit south of Blanche towards Town Line Road and back to 35 miles per hour based on the data the machine produced for Scott. It indicated that, um, 25 is probably real slow compared to what everybody's driving.
I know, as soon as I hit 35 and I realize I'm speeding, I slow down.
I was gonna wonder if you were the one who hit 58.
Okay, that could be it too, but I probably slowed down and I realized.
You saw the little black...
Yeah, I'm like, darn, there's a, there's a study going on.
I was a little...
It was a skateboarder, come on.
So then, does that mean that we'll be sending, what, what are the notices that we're going to send out on that? Because my, um, complaints have always been the residents on Parkview Drive because they don't slow down when they do get to the residence. So how far are we doing this?
Well, that's, that's a good question. I mean, it, it's, it's not a state statute required public hearing, so there's, there's no requirement of the radius in which we notify people. In fact, we don't even have to notify people. We could just publish it as a public hearing in the paper and do Facebook and things of that nature. So that, that is one option. Um, but, but we could determine a radius that we feel is appropriate. Um, you know, at some point, you're, you're going to get a lot of houses. If you do, within 100 feet of Parkview Drive, you're, you know, you're going to get a lot. Um, so I don't know what the most effective approach is towards getting the word out, um, outside of, of social media and the Courier and, and, and the newspaper, well, and, and the public notices. Um, so we'll have to determine that. The other thing we have to determine is a date. Um, we talked about it at Public Safety that probably doesn't make sense if, if the, if the council chooses to have a meeting on the 19th. I don't know if that makes sense, it's pretty close to the holidays, it's not a lot of time to get the word out. The next meeting would be January 2nd. Everybody's going to be super excited that the Badgers won, I don't know if they're going to want to come talk about Parkview Drive. Um, so, you know, we'd probably be looking at, at the earliest second meeting in January. Um, so, so that, that's the other thing we would need to determine, and, you know, I'd probably work with the chief and, and how we'd make, see if that makes sense, and then how, how do we want to get the word out? Probably work with, with Inga on that.
Well, couldn't we do the comprehensive plan public hearing and the speed limit public hearing on the same night to draw a bigger crowd?
We could, yeah, we could, yep. We had two people at Public Safety.
We could double it. And then, we could just slip in the speed limit thing when we send notice for the other hearing, can't we do that? And by the way, there will also be another hearing at the, can't we?
Do it all in one night.
Okay.
Save, save, save some money. Now we can buy that digital clock.
And a billboard, and we can have somebody design a billboard for us.
So I think all that stuff's, we're just going to have to figure it out, what makes the most sense, yeah. But we know you'll go door to door.
And you are going door to door, all right?
Even if it's negative 10.
Any other committee reports?
Public Works, we decided to recommend for approval to the State Council, um, the closing of sidewalk on 148 Green Hill Circle for winter, because that's right next to another closed sidewalk, and it's kind of a dead-end area, so there's also sidewalk on the other side of the street, so we decided to recommend that. And the, uh, engineer gave, engineer gave a spectacular report on everything that's going on as well. It was great, it lasted two-thirds of the time, and it was very riveting.
Two minutes?
Three minutes, three minutes. The, the meeting was three minutes long, but two-thirds of it, it was riveting. Sewers may have come up. That's all I've got.
Um, Parks and Rec Committee report, do we, do we already have it?
Yeah, we covered, I think, we got...
And the library board also had the opportunity to look at the plans for the story garden, and everyone is very excited about it. We're also excited about all of the activities that we have going on in our library and the amount of people that we have coming in and out. Um, we are looking at a new, um, system at the beginning of the year, and so everybody, you know, get ready to, get ready to get all kinds of stuff out of our library.
Ignorance will not be an option in this community when we have access to all of this information. Smart people are dangerous. Any other committee reports?
Can I just give a general item?
Is it a committee report? No, then you're out of order. Staff, we'll come back to that, staff reports? If you win the team building exercise. If you all bring cookies, next meeting, we will not have to do team building. So, optional team building contingent upon...
Can we bring cookies and do team building?
It's a cookie show off. Yes, council cookie challenge, we can invite the community to... Okay, staff reports, Howie. I noticed that we are not collecting leaves anymore. I was very disappointed, there isn't any snow on the ground.
We have to quit sometime, so. Whoever had their leaves out yesterday is going to get them picked up, so we're doing that. And we're also going to collect, um, brush this week from the windstorm, so...
But you could have a leaf attached to the brush.
Could. It'll go through the chipper, so. And then, uh, we have salted sand at the garage because it is supposed to snow Friday, so...
No!
It's gotta happen sometime. We're just, we're just doing the, we're doing the last, the last go around, so...
Is there a place to dispose of leaves?
The yard waste bin is still open.
All right, so...
Oh, they, they just haven't got that far, they started on that side, they're going all the way through.
They dumped some.
Oh, that, and some of them were the, where people mulched their yards and stuff, where they had a lot of green stuff in them, they're picking those up with the skid loader instead, so...
Don't ask for special privileges.
And they're trying to sweep the streets one last time, too.
Tax bills are going out this week. Um, I believe Minute Man is mailing them tomorrow. Um, and we got prelim audit stuff coming up in two weeks, because it's already that time of the year, so...
Okay. Al?
Uh, I, I don't have much of a staff report, but I, I, I think everybody knows now. Just wanted to make an announcement that my wife and I are expecting our second child in June of 2018.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
See, you weren't the last one to know.
No respect. Inga? Dates? Chief?
I have no update. I talked to you all last week, so nothing, nothing since then.
This is the fifth Tuesday out of the last six Tuesdays that we've been together.
Could we meet next week?
And we're still all speaking to each other.
Mark, you've been here for one of them.
So let's renegotiate that contract.
You were with contract... Mark, you've only been here four of us.
On vacation, otherwise. We keep score, it's a little, little secret tablet we have.
I'm done for 2017.
Okay, team building, so Al gave me this idea. Okay, team building. So Al gave me this idea.
I just wanted to let everybody know how successful this weekend was in the City of Milton with all of the events that we had going on. Um, I, I was actually um a participant in the, of course, the Mary Milton Tree Lighting. Um, and then I was also a participant at the gathering place and I have to tell you that there were so many comments from people about the, all of the, the things that our retailers were doing, their specials and the house walk. Um, we had a very nice group for the tree lighting. Um, and I just, I, I especially just wanna put a shout out to everybody who made those things happen. Because that is exactly what Mary Milton is all about, is all of the wonderful things that we have to do in the City of Milton to celebrate Christmas. And I wanna thank all the people that made that happen. Thank you, Linda. Oh, but then I also, not done yet. I just wanna remind everybody that the Dickens Christmas Carol performance is going to be at the Milton House on the eighth, ninth, and tenth. So please call the Milton House if you have not already done that to get your ticket. And then to um continue the merry-making in the City of Milton, on Tuesday, December twelfth, from at seven o'clock at the high school, there's the choir concert for the sixth to eighth graders. On the fourteenth, the high school choir concert will take place at the high school at seven o'clock. On the eighteenth, the high school band concert will be at the high school at seven o'clock. And then on the nineteenth, the band concert for the sixth to eighth graders at seven o'clock. So there's still a lot more wonderful things happening here in Milton. So I just wanna encourage everybody to get out and enjoy it.
Jeremy, do you have anything? Anybody else? I have one thing. Um, so Thursday of last week, we had a nonprofit summit at, at City Hall that Judge Chris Kefler um had organized and we had, uh, we had meetings with community leaders. And then we, um, Judge Kefler invited everybody that um she knew of for nonprofits in the City of Milton to come together, to meet each other, to hear presentations about what each nonprofit has to offer and what they're doing in the community and to um kinda strategically plan uh working together in the future. And one of the really nice things um was that like four of the churches were there. So um it's extraordinary to get them all together because they're so busy. So it was a nice opportunity for all of us to get together and to um get to know what's going on in Milton. Um, the other thing that was super cool is that we had a panel of youth that um came up here and answered questions about why they volunteer, why they get involved in nonprofits and to give recommendations about how we can increase participation in volunteering in nonprofit organizations. So their input was so valuable and it was really exciting to see them participate. So hopefully we will have a second um summit next year and we'll keep going with it. So that was really cool. So for team building, if you've been um in the audience of a taped TV show, either a variety show or comedy show or whatever, if you've ever been in a live audience, tell us what one you were in the audience of. And if you haven't been, then what one would you, what show would you like to be in the audience for? Like it could be anything that does taping and not just a laugh track. You can? Okay, we'll start with Linda. Okay, um, Jeremy?
I did the Bozo Show at least a half a dozen times.
Did you really? What was that?
Besides that, my cousin got picked for the grand prize game and he struggled. My mom was on there before I was born when she was a young kid as the Irish dancer probably five years in a row and they do their thing on Saint Patrick's Day. But yeah, we got to go to a lot being NBC Towers down there. Jenny Jones, Jerry Springer, seen them all.
Oh, you are our star. Ryan?
Would it count if I was in a movie?
Sure.
I, um, I'm in the movie that's, the three D movie that's in the um Civil War Museum in Kenosha. It filmed that a few years back and recruit, and recruited a whole bunch of reen actors to help out with that. So I'm in there, I think over a dozen times.
Very cool. Inga?
I was in the studio audience for David Letterman and we got picked out of the lineup to be in the first row. So when you're in line, at least what they did when we were, when we went to see them, um, they watch you, how you're interacting with other people that are in line waiting for tickets. And then when you get to a certain point in the line, then they pick people out of the line to be in the front row. So we were able to be in the front row. So that was cool.
I was on Stephen Colbert last week, Thursday and Friday. Um, but now that I've done that, I'd like to see how it's done differently at different shows. So I'd like to go back and, and see Jimmy Fallon or Jimmy Kimmel or somebody like that, just to see how it's different.
Teresa?
I was never on one, but I would like to be on Johnny Carson. I just, I loved his shows, but a little too late.
Larry?
Interesting, I love, I was on the Bozo Show too. One time, that was kinda neat. Um, I, yeah, there's a lot of different ones I'd be interested in, but I'd probably like to be, because I'm a psychologist, probably Dr. Phil.
Dave?
I think you heard my comment when Linda spoke up. I'd have to agree with um Carol Burnett. It's gotta be one of the funniest shows in the history of TV and the special this weekend just brought back a lot of those memories.
Yeah, I saw that. That was a really cool special this weekend. Dan?
If I had to pick a show, it might be The Price is Right.
Oh, well, of course it would be. You shopping genius. Who would he even argue with the prices?
Well, you have to pay taxes on it.
Come on, you can create something. Mark?
You lose forty percent.
Well, I was on the show for Howie Olsen and Cowboy Eddie.
Okay, you have to like explain that to some of us.
Every night at four o'clock, you get home from school, you watch that show.
How were you on that?
I think it's in Madison.
Yeah, it was in Madison.
It was in Madison?
Yeah, it was a live show. They, they used to have actual live TV shows back in those days. It was black and white TV, you understand, but yes, it was Howie Olsen and his uh ventriloquist dummy.
Cowboy Eddie.
Okay, we need to watch some of these shows while we eat cookies.
Two cartoons and all that stuff. Never thought about it. I was stumped with these two. They picked my choices, but I don't know.
Jeopardy?
Eh, you know, I don't know. Let's see. Trying to think of a really strange show.
The Gong Show?
Let's see.
We, we, we could have taken an example to her.
Yeah, something like that, yeah. Let's see. Um, well, besides the modern comedy shows like Jimmy Fallon and those, let's see. Just to see how terrible it would be to go to the Hee Haw Show would be.
Mark, you've stayed this long. That would be fun, yeah. Yeah, I would like to go. Chief?
Um, circa nineteen ninety-one, I think, Oprah Winfrey. That was before she gave away everything. We, there was nothing, no.
Well, I don't know what I'd try and be on now, but weird things I've done in the past, I guess. I was the um Thursday Night News anchor for UW Whitewater's TV News. So I was on that. But then I was also interviewed on morning television in Cuenca, Ecuador, in Spanish, so.
Really? Okay.
Look for it on YouTube, it's there.
Oh, you're not even gonna tell us about it?
I talked about how I learned Spanish and then the person who was interviewing me talked in English and said, oh, you did learn. You can talk to me in Spanish. We just established that.
Are you our interpreter on staff?
That was ten years ago. Over ten years ago.
Let's do a city council meeting in Spanish. Alright, we got everybody? Y'all have to bring cookies. Y'all do. Except, you know, Jeremy being on the Bozo Show multiple times. Linda, they can't be any worse than Linda who is not going to bake them and bring raw dough. Yes, yes. Alright, do we decide we're gonna meet December nineteenth for sure?
For the last meeting, so I put it on this agenda just so everybody can have a council in. If, if we get close to that date and there's nothing of actionable consequence, I'll let you know and I guess you can make the decision at that time if you wanna cancel it or not.
Okay, well, it depends on how y'all are doing with your cookie baking.
We, we do have to appoint poll workers, yeah.
Oh, I wonder how you knew that.
I don't. Yeah, if that's the only thing, we might be able to have a special meeting at a special time that doesn't encumber everybody's entire evening. I was thinking like four o'clock.
Some of us have other jobs. But I could be absent at a meeting too. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor? Inga must have not heard that. All those opposed? All those opposed? We're adjourned with a first and a second.